...favor and just make sure that your phones are on silent. It would be greatly appreciated. And if I can get a motion to open the meeting.
Still move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could just remain standing just for a moment of silence, just in remembrance to the tragic events that hit our neighboring community. And just please remember, go home, give hugs, and remember to say I love you and appreciate every moment for what you have, while you have it. Thank you. All right, so our meeting for the voting meeting for the Mahopac Board of Education for October 29th is called to order at 7:02. If Christine, you would like to take over, Superintendent of Schools?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have an action-packed agenda this evening. I believe our guests are here. I'd like to start with our introduction for our student of distinction, Matthew Moreta. He's in the digital film program at PNW Boses. So if the Boses contingent can join us. So we have Gregory Brown, Assistant Superintendent, Steve Lowry, Director of Career and Technical Education, Stacy Vaccaro, Digital Film Teacher, and Josh Thompson, Communications. Is that on?
Okay, I'm going to use my outdoor voice. But thank you so much for the warm introduction, and I just wanted to express PNW Boses gratitude, hope to the board, the administration, and the Mayapac community for partnering with us and allowing us to provide such wonderful opportunities for our students. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for all of your support and collaboration. We're really excited to be with you tonight and just share a little bit about the good work that's going on and honor one of your students who is sitting in the back row back there, Matthew. So congratulations, Matt. I'm going to take a moment just to introduce Steve Lowry, who's our Director of Career and Technical Education, who's going to also say a few words, but thank you again.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So this is our time to embarrass Matthew, so I'm going to have him come up because he's the guest of honor here. So while he's coming up, let me just tell you what a spectacular young man this is. So he consistently demonstrates hard work. He's in the Digital Film and Sound Program, which is a two-year program at the Tech Center. And he just really is an amazing young man. He's got exceptional talent. He is, you know, really a leader amongst all of his peers in the class. The students really look up to him. And he is a member of our Skills USA Leadership Club. And just as a fun fact about Matt is that him and his partner competed in the regional competition, which is all the, what's called Zone Four Boses in our region. So it's Orange Ulster, Ulster Duchess, ourselves, Southern Westchester Boses. And he secured first place. So he was the best out of the best, yeah, for sure. He loves coming to school each day, and he has incredible enthusiasm, and he has incredible talent. So just remember him because he's going to make it big one day, and you'll say, I remember him when? I remember when he was at the October, uh, Mayapac Board Meeting. And yeah, he's going places for sure, not to put too much pressure on him. But we do have a few things for him that we'd like to give our students to recognize. And again, we have a lot of students that come from Mayapac and thank you for supporting them to come to CTE, and he stood out amongst all of them. So let's give him a big round of applause. And if I can have the superintendent come on up to present his medal. So we're going to give him a certificate that formally recognizes him as our student of distinction from Mayapac. That is for you. And Steve, I'm going to give you this medal, fresh out of the bag. And I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge his teacher that came out, Ms. Vaccaro, who really is dedicated as well. So again, thank you. Thank you for recognizing us tonight, and enjoy the rest of the board meeting.
board, you know how?
Quick test of mic one.
Hit it again, hit it again.
Yeah.
Hit it again.
So now we're going to...
If you want to give me another minute to get that livestream going again.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
It looks like it's back up. We're good to go.
All right.
All right, apologize for that technical difficulty for our home viewing audience, but we believe that we are back. We're just waiting for the projector to get warmed up. And in the meantime, if we move on to our second presentation, which is one of our own club's performance. So Superintendent Tona?
Thank you. So very exciting. This past weekend, our Mahopac High School Drama Club performed a comedy called This Murder Was Staged, a lesser-known play, but they did not disappoint. Our students were fabulous. If you were able to catch the entire show, you definitely were in for a wonderful experience. So I'm going to ask the board to take a seat so you can enjoy. We have members of the Mahopac Drama Club performing a scene from This Murder Was Staged.
Hi, everyone. I'm Olivia Missiag, and I'm the President of the Drama Company. Thank you for inviting us to perform a small section of our fall play, This Murder Was Staged, about a group of actors who are forced to interrupt their performance when tragedy strikes. Through a series of flashbacks, the mystery unfolds. Our play opens with the unexpected murder of our director, Sinclair Hemmings. Everyone is a suspect, even the members of the audience. And before you know it, the cast members start pointing fingers at each other.
Well, now that I think about it, maybe it was Mark, but I was going to say our lead actress, Kira Gimble.
Lies. He's a liar. He literally lies for a living.
And so do you, Ms. Gimble.
I...oh, um, yeah, that's true.
Go on, Thornton.
Well, just last week, Kira and I were running some lines.
Your latest movie was a bomb, isn't that right, Mr. McCann?
Ugh, please, call me Dash.
Is that your real name?
It's the name my fans have come to know and love, and that's all that matters.
Except they don't love you as much anymore, do they? The public has grown weary of you, your old hat, Dash.
That's not true. I am as popular now as I've ever been. I am a star, a star.
Okay, stop.
What? No good? I mean, I thought I was pretty good.
You were fine. It's just this play, this theater, all of it.
What's wrong with the play? I like it. I think it all ties together really nicely.
That's exactly my point. There's no art, no nuance. Sinclair promised me a real starring role, something I could sink my teeth into. Instead, I'm playing a lady detective, big whoop.
But isn't it nice that when it's the end of the play, it's the end? Like, people can watch it and then like go home. Like, people don't have to think about a play after it's over. Thinking is, um, uh...oh, wait, wait. What was that you were saying? Do I like peanut butter? Uh, yeah, I guess so.
I didn't ask if you...ugh, why am I even talking to you about this?
People say that I have a face to like to talk at. I mean, people tell me that all the time.
Okay, well, I just wish I had a dramatic monologue. I want to explore real emotions. Instead, I just say quippy lines and solve the murder.
But isn't it nice when murder's fun and you get to be the center of it all? I mean, I am the lead, but...
You're not the lead.
Yes, I am. I'm the one that sits the most downstage from everybody else, the lead.
What are you...I don't...never mind. It's just that I had the chance to be in an actual movie. It was an independent film, and I was supposed to play the mother of an actor who's only seven years younger than me. But still, it was a movie. But no, Sinclair Hemmings calls me up and promises me a big leading role, the role of a lifetime, he said.
Cool. What's the play?
This one.
Oh, oh, right. This isn't as good as a play.
Yeah, even you get it.
Yeah, even me.
And then I find out I'm making less than all my co-stars.
What? That's not right.
Including you.
Well, I mean, I am a box office draw because of, you know...
To top it all off, that coward of a director made me tell the playwright whenever he wanted to cut or change a line. He said it sounds better coming from a woman. Can you believe that?
Yes, yes, I can. Wait, wait, are we still talking about Sinclair?
I hate him so much. Somebody should just murder him.
I disagree. I, Thornton Jackson, think murder is wrong, unless it's in a play and it's fun, but I don't think anyone should murder director Sinclair Hemmings.
Well, you're wrong, Thornton, but also very handsome and talented. I can't resist you. In fact, no one can, but I must go and plan how to murder our director. Good day.
And that's exactly how it went.
That is absolutely not how it went, okay? Some of that is true. You did randomly bring up peanut butter, but I never said someone should murder Sinclair. I just said he was a jerk and he lied to me.
Don't listen to her, Doctor. I have great memory.
I told you, I'm a detective.
A doctor and a detective? That's impressive.
I may not have liked Sinclair, but I definitely didn't kill him. But I think I know who did.
Is that so?
During Tech, I overheard an exchange. Someone in the production had a pretty big motive.
Who?
Trudy Mitchell, our stage manager. Wait, me? That's right. Our beloved stage manager is the likely murderer. It was during Tech.
Do you know what I'm thinking?
You're thinking? You want to make some tweaks.
I'm thinking I want to make some tweaks. Now, Act One should feel like Act Fun, you know, but right now it's just feeling like Act None. Do you know what I mean?
Unfortunately, yes. And you want to start from page one and redo it all, don't you?
No, 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 not, not all. I was thinking we could start somewhere back a bit, just close to the beginning.
Okay, what page?
Hmm, how about one?
Page one?
Hey, that's a good idea. Let's do it all over.
We've spent the past three and a half days teching Act One alone. We don't have enough time to start from scratch?
We're not using all of the hours in the day yet, are we?
We can't use all the hours in the day?
What, because there are rules and laws and unions and stuff like that? Yada, yada, yada. This is the theater. What matters most is art, am I right?
No.
Great, now Judy.
It's Trudy.
Let's call that a minor rewrite.
You want to rewrite my name?
Oh, trust me, it's an improvement. Never settle for the first draft of anything. Now Judy, in addition to starting again from page one, I was thinking of doing some recasting.
You want to recast the play during Tech?
No, don't be absurd. I want to just recast, you know, some of the parts. We'll do a bit of an audition-tech hybrid. I assume you've done those before.
That's not a thing anyone has ever done before.
Then we're pioneers, Judy. I like your spirit.
I could kill you.
Let's order dinner first. Why don't you go around, get everyone else's orders, and then come back and we'll get started again, shall we?
I've already got everyone's orders, except yours.
See that? No, this menu is all wrong.
What are you doing?
This menu is wrong.
It's...are you rewriting the menu?
Yes, well, it's rather dreary. It needs some...do you know what I mean?
What is this?
It's what I want.
You just wrote in "mother's chicken."
Yes, well, I want the chicken mother used to make for me.
You can't just write your own things on the menu.
But I'm the director.
Not of the restaurant!
Well, I should be, what amateur's!
You crossed out the veggie burger with fries. That's what I ordered. The thought of having it's been the only thing that's gone me through today.
Do you know what's better than a veggie burger? Or fries? The theater! Yum. Take a bite. Are you gonna, you're gonna go, "Ah!" You can't eat if your mouth is...no. Uh...mm...yum, this is really good. The theater! And a plate of mother's chicken. Go ahead and put in the order, Judy.
Somehow, some way, I am going to kill you!
Um, I have been told that I am allowed to announce our spring musical, and the musical is Annie, so...yay! Thank you, everyone.
It was a terrific show. I'm sorry for those that weren't able to be here with us this weekend. I know you got a good taste of it now. They did a fabulous job. Let's give them another round of applause. And now we'll move on to Board of Education recognition. October is always Board of Education Recognition Month. I will say my remarks later on in the program, but I would like to invite our President of the Administrators Association, Tom Cozakrea, to the podium. He has a few words to say.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Tona, Board President Schneider, Assistant Superintendents and School Board. It's my honor tonight to speak on behalf of the Mayapac Administrators and to share our gratitude for the work of the School Board. We wanted to take a moment to celebrate and acknowledge the dedication of our School Board members who tirelessly work to foster a nurturing environment for our students and our community. To each of you, thank you for your unwavering commitment. Your efforts often go beyond the demands of your roles. They extend into your personal lives, taking time away from your families and other responsibilities. We recognize the sacrifices you make to ensure our school district thrives, and we deeply, deeply appreciate your willingness to serve. In today's changing educational landscape, it's crucial that our schools are led by individuals who are not only passionate about education, but also committed to listening to the voices of our community. You have done just that, engaging with parents, teachers, students, and various stakeholders to create a strong perspective on how our schools should operate. Your dedication to understanding our community needs is invaluable. Thank you for supporting numerous initiatives that have made significant impact in our district. The final phases of the Bond Project are a testament to your vision for improvement of our facilities. We also wanted to highlight the implementation of initiatives such as our K-6 reading program. This initiative has helped broaden our approach to literacy, ensuring that every student has access to a robust and engaging reading and writing curriculum. Additionally, the introduction of studio art at the middle school. The arts are an essential part of a well-rounded education, and we're grateful for your support in making this a reality. Finally, your emphasis on professional development is commendable. By aligning the practices of our elementary and secondary schools, you are fostering a cohesive educational experience for all students, ensuring that they receive consistent, high-quality instruction throughout their academic journey. In closing, thank you for your tireless efforts, your passion, and your dedication to the Mayapac schools. Your work is instrumental in shaping the future of our children and our community. Together, we will continue to strive for excellence, creating a positive and supportive environment for every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cozakrea. And the AMA also has some gifts to show their token of appreciation to the Board of Education. Now I'd like to invite up Tracy Casey on behalf of the Mahopac Teachers Association, or her representative.
Sorry, you don't get Tracy, you get me tonight. My name's Marsha Webb. I'm a teacher at Lakeview, and I'll be representing the MTA this evening. On behalf of the Mayapac Teachers Association, I want to thank each of our School Board members for their tireless commitment to our students, staff, and community. We appreciate your dedication and hard work. Our district is lucky to have such devoted individuals serving this community. Thank you on behalf of all the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Thank you to the MTA.
And thank you to both of you and to your units. We appreciate the support, and we appreciate the common goals that we strive for. Thank you again. Next item is going to be an update from our superintendent in regards to our strategic plan.
So almost a year ago, the district, the Board of Education adopted the strategic plan for the next five years. It's a blueprint for success. And tonight I'd like to provide you with an update now that we're just about one year in. So here you see the Mahopac Central School District vision and mission statements. These were crafted and adopted by the Board of Education last year. So our vision statement, "The Mahopac Central School District strives to become schools of excellence that produce exceptional members of society." And the mission statement, "The Mahopac Central School District develops educated, upstanding citizens with practical life skills through rigorous preparation for the real world." And here are our core values. We value high academic standards and real-world readiness, leadership traits and uniqueness, a safe learning environment. We expect compassion, collaboration, and empathy, resilient critical thinkers and creative problem solvers, lifelong learners who exhibit pride for their school and community. We are Mahopac. So here, it's probably not too big, but it is attached to the agenda this evening. We have five different priorities in the strategic plan. The first is student academic opportunities. Here you can see each of the action items, the anticipated completion date, and our current status. So we did establish a universal pre-kindergarten program for this year with 156 seats, and we have 155 students have been enrolled so far. We are looking to increase awareness and participation in our SEAL of Civic Readiness. That's an endorsement on our seniors' high school diplomas. We're hoping to increase it by '25, '26, and beyond, but in '22, '23, we had 23 students earn the SEAL, and this past year, 35 students. So you can see that we're well on our way of improving the number of students who qualify for the SEAL of Civic Readiness. We are currently giving presentations in middle school and in high school to explain the opportunity to our students. We're looking to incorporate Mahopac history into the K-12 curriculum. That'll be a longstanding project, but at this point, we do have an elective at the high school called the History of the Hudson Valley, and we are working to expand upon that so that all students K-12 understand Mahopac's history in the future. We're looking to increase awareness and participation in SEAL of Bili literacy. That's a work in progress. And providing financial literacy opportunities for all students, so we're currently reviewing our course syllabi from the high school related to financial literacy. Continuing with student academic opportunities, we're looking to increase participation in college readiness opportunities, and we're in the initial discussions and exploration of the International Baccalaureate Program. That doesn't mean to say that that will be a program that we adopt. We are just in the initial phases of looking at that as a program that could enhance our studies for our students. An action item is to ensure a broad continuum of services and courses to meet the needs of all students. For this year, we added the opportunity for high school-level credit in art at the middle school level, and we changed the format of our advanced math track at the middle school to provide more latitude for student growth, so that expands those that are going to take algebra in eighth grade, the preparation begins in sixth grade instead of seventh grade. We're looking to increase instructional technology opportunities for students. We're investigating how existing curriculum and technology programs, as well as experiential computing programs in the elementary grades, are getting the students ready for success using coding. That's a very important avenue for students to understand. And we've already made outreach to the community and our edtech vendors to evaluate new and novel approaches to introducing technology applications for students. More to come on that front. Providing opportunities and preparing students to be successful in accomplishing real-world tasks, that's very much ongoing. A lot of the strategic plan incorporates that, but there'll be more to come in the future. Expanding high school pathways and electives has been something very important to the district, and while we have a very robust engineering program, for this year, the high school added an elective in careers in health and medical sciences, as well as a brand-new allied health pathway. So we're looking to create a variety of pathways for our students so that they can explore courses that they might be interested in for the real world, for their adulthood. And also, it's important to have those opportunities to explore those courses in high school because you can also determine if it's something that you are not interested in before the students go on to college or career preparation, and there's monies involved spending it there. So we're very happy with the course offerings at the high school, and definitely more to come there. Our second priority is student learning environment. We're looking to expand networking with college admissions representatives. There's a lot listed there. April Umic is our Administrator for Counseling Services, and she's done a terrific job. She's in year two in that role. And every Tuesday and Thursday for the fall, you can stop at the high school, and we have college representatives in a dedicated space, meeting with students that are interested. Lots of opportunities for college fairs in the region, financial aid information. You can check out our counseling website, and Mrs. Umic has a lot of information, resources. And those informational resources shouldn't just be looked at when your child is in high school. Take a look sooner. It gives you a good idea of where your child will be headed. Conducting an annual review of security and cybersecurity. So at the end of this presentation, our Administrator for Safety, Security, and Compliance, Mr. Billu, will talk about some security enhancements. But looking at the other items here, we've been looking at, from the technology compliance and cybersecurity end, EdLaw 2D compliance. So we make sure that the vendors that we bring in, the software, meets the standards... So we make sure that the vendors that we bring in, the software meets the standards that are identified by the state. We're looking at new approval processes for free software requests, and continuing to educate the community about recognizing spam and phishing attempts, which unfortunately are a regular occurrence. We're reviewing the continuum of special education services. In progress right now, we're doing a special education program review that the district brought in so that we can reflect upon our own procedures and opportunities in the special ed department, and get feedback, and make improvements for the future. Updating and publicizing curriculum maps and scope and sequence, that's definitely ongoing. Dr. Lawrence, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, provides monthly updates on curriculum at our board meetings, and we promote information through social media, and definitely more to come in that area. Dr. Lawrence is also working on creation of a profile of a Mahopac graduate and the profile of a learner for key grade levels. The state education department is also looking at profile of a graduate. So a lot of our work in that front, we'll have to wait until the state releases everything that they need to release so that we stay on path with them. But this is a great opportunity for us to really identify the key goals for student learners in grades five, eight, and 12, and we use Thought Exchange, our survey program, to help us gather information. Continuing in student learning environment, we're looking to expose students to technical skills through training, instructional technology, and opportunities to engage with district technology resources. So Ben August is our Director of Technology, and he's been looking at exploring ways to get our students involved in computer repair. So that's a skill that's very important. We have a one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Every student has their own Chromebook, and sometimes things break. And so it'd be great to teach the students how to make some of those repairs, and then that could possibly be a career for them in the future. We're looking to use data to inform instruction operations. We've been really making data a priority this year, looking at different programs that exist and collecting data in each of those programs so that we can have benchmark information and continuously look at that data multiple times a year, year after year, to show the growth or areas that we need to improve in. So those discussions happen quite frequently at all sorts of meetings throughout the district. Creation and utilization of common assessments for grade levels and courses. In kindergarten through eighth grade, these are the areas that we're already doing that in, running records, we're using Star Renaissance, reveal math assessments, and ESGI for kindergarten and first grade. I know that the secondary departments are also looking at common assessments as well. Expanding professional learning opportunities for all staff. We do that all the time, but we'll give more of an update in the future. We have our superintendent's conference day coming up next week, and our staff members have the opportunity for PD at that time. Build digital resilience, wellness, and citizenship for all students. So we collaborate with our ETS coaches, that's our education technology and STEAM coaches, and our building technology leaders, to improve and integrate existing scope and sequence documents across the schools and grade levels. So what that says is that we're trying to educate the students at all grade levels through regular learning opportunities that happen, especially at the elementary school, so that they understand how to be a good citizen through the use of technology. Student well-being. We're looking to decrease student discipline issues through restorative practices. More to come on that because there's a program that's in its initial phases at the high school. Develop a multi-tiered system of support plan that's called MTSS. Currently, we have Academic Intervention Services, which is AIS, and Response to Intervention, which is RTI. And what MTSS does, it pulls them both together. So we are reviewing all of our intervention programs at the elementary school and the middle school, and we're looking to focus on intervention goals and curriculum and assessment at different levels to meet the needs of students that are in the mainstream, students that need a little more extra help, and students that need a lot more extra help to be successful. And then two other action items there, improving equity and access for all students and providing students with appropriate resources to meet their social, emotional needs. We are working on that, but we'll provide an update in a future meeting. Looking at facilities and infrastructure, we're developing a multi-year financial plan, and Alyssa Murray, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, she'll provide an update to the board next month. Completing the capital project, we're almost there. We're looking to approve Phase Four Lakeview roof replacement with the balance of the funds. Most of the capital project items that were originally voted on by the community have been completed or close to being completed. There is some money unspent based on smart decision-making, as well as the release of contingent money that we didn't use in different projects. So the Lakeview roof is in need of repair. So on tonight's agenda, as a matter of fact, the board will consider appointing our architect, Tetra Tech, to be the architect of record for this Phase Four project. We're looking to develop a multi-year facilities plan. So our building condition survey is in progress, and we hope to have that completed in the early winter. Rebranding the district with the new mascot and logo, that's definitely ongoing, as you can all see, as you walk through this building, communications that are sent home. We've been doing a lot of rebranding, and we're working on getting quotes for the turf fields that need to have the logo changed. Digitizing records and reducing paper usage is another action. So we're looking at how do we use paper records in the district, and how can we replace them with digital records? And getting quotes from vendors to support paper reduction across the district. And this is a favorite, improve bathrooms across the district. So we are in the process of reviewing all of the bathrooms throughout the district and prioritizing which ones are in need of repair or replacement first. There's a lot that goes into that because if we make a repair or replacement to a bathroom, they all need to be ADA compliant, they need to go through a state review process. It's not something that can be done quickly, but we are working on it, and we hope to have some bathrooms renovated, and then have a plan to have them all renovated over a period of time. And the last priority is community engagement. Market the school district in a positive way. So we've been using all of our logos and branding assets with the staff. We've updated letterhead across the district. We have an alumni network that is in its infancy stages, so we're looking to get a meeting together soon with the core group of people to bring that forward. There was a newsletter released last spring, and we're looking to have more newsletters to come and more opportunities for our alumni to get together and network. And every week in the newsletter, there is a link, if you are a graduate of Mahopac or you know someone who is, and you're not part of the alumni network, please click on the link and join it. Establish parent university, I'm sorry, improve communication with families. So there's ongoing reminders to our staff that responses to communities should be within 48 hours, even if someone doesn't have an answer to something, to just say, "I've received your email," or "I've received your phone call, and I will get back to you shortly." So that is definitely something that I take pride in, in making sure that I respond to the community in a timely fashion, and I encourage all of our staff members to do the same. Establish parent university opportunities. We've had some opportunities already. These events happen at our buildings, as well as across the district. And again, we use Thought Exchange as a mechanism to gather information from the community to find out what they're interested in learning more about. And in an effort to improve communication with staff, one of the initiatives that we've implemented is Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Jennifer Pontillo, has implemented exit surveys. So staff members who leave the district, whether it's due to retirement or based on they're moving on to another opportunity, they complete these exit surveys, and we're going to provide periodic updates to the Board of Education. We review what they say, and it's an effort to improve what we do here in the district. So looking ahead for this year, I shared these next slides with the staff at the opening of school. Priority one, student academic opportunities. You could see the goal here. We're looking at what other courses can we offer to our students, and how can we maximize participation in SEAL of Civic Readiness and SEAL of Bili literacy opportunities for our students. Our second priority, student learning environment. You heard me mention it before, we're using data to inform instruction, as well as inform infrastructure. Curriculum maps and scope and sequence updates are important this year, completing the profile of a learner, and hopefully the profile of a graduate, and doing that special education program review this year. Our third priority is student well-being. Our theme for next week's superintendent's conference day, and this year, is creating a welcoming and affirming environment. We want our students to come to school and be happy and feel welcomed and part of a community, and so that is something that we've been focusing on this year and having conversations in our meetings. We're looking to implement some restorative practices as an alternative to discipline, and we're looking to develop our multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS plan. And priority four, facilities and infrastructure, we're going to continue that rebranding process, and we're looking to conduct the facilities improvement plan. And priority five, community engagement, we want to promote the positives in the district. Thank you to everyone who has submitted a PAC-AID to a staff member who deserves that recognition. That's going strong, and we look forward to seeing more of our staff members recognized each week in our newsletter. As always, we're looking to improve communication throughout the district, provide more parent university opportunities, and expand that alumni network. So before I move on to safety and security update and turn the microphone over to Troy Billiu, who also has Crystal Holton, one of our social workers, and Dr. Deborah Zides, our psychologist. Does the board have any questions on the strategic plan or comments?
Thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
So, question about reviewing the syllabi for financial literacy. What goes into that? What are we looking to accomplish from that review? I know we talked during the budgets session that we were in the review, so... Because I've always felt that the end goal should be, we have that elective, that half year elective, we should be looking to find ways to have that be a requirement for all graduates. So what are we looking for implementing into other classes, making it work in that syllabi? Just kind of walk me through what the end goal is there.
Sure. So we're looking to see what's already in existence in our curriculum, because there are plenty of examples of financial literacy exploration and conversations and instruction in what we currently do. And then the next step will be, well, what's missing? And how can we provide this to everyone? How can we ensure that every student, when they leave our school district, has a set of skills that will help them get through life? So it's definitely a work in progress, and I look forward to providing more details in the next update.
Yeah, because I agree wholeheartedly. Because if a student goes right now, that elective, a student takes that elective, they are well more equipped, because it's all there. It's all the content of investing, learning about the value of a dollar, balancing a checkbook, looking into buying a home. I could go on about all the core skills. So it's just important that we eventually find a way to work that in to be a staple. We talked about sports management or sports statistics being something that's a math option. We definitely have to find ways, because you know, we've spoken superintendent, the board agrees, it's just a critical skill. So I appreciate all the efforts made in that direction.
Thank you. And we are hoping in the near future to add a business pathway. So that's an important piece when we're looking at all the courses and all the electives that we offer, especially at the high school. Where do they fit in? Because we have all of these pathways pretty much already there, and we just have to brand it that way and come up with a procedure for giving the students a certain order for the courses that they take, and then hopefully give them some type of acknowledgement when they graduate that they completed a pathway. So financial literacy will definitely be a big part of that as we move forward. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that before I turn it over to Troy? Trustee Harrigan?
I just, could we go through just real quick with the SEAL of Civic Readiness? Like maybe the courses that are needed, or things that might be needed to achieve that?
Yeah, it's not specific courses. It's activities and opportunities. So there's an outline for it. I believe that there's some of the... I'm trying to think of the word. When the students, the community service is a big piece of it, so a lot of our students are eligible for SEAL of Civic Readiness because of the requirement of the community service. And there's different projects that they can complete, or coursework that they can complete, and it's a series of requirements, and it's across the state. So it's a state-recognized SEAL of Civic Readiness.
Thank you.
And I can have Dr. Lawrence go into that in further detail at next month's work session.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I'll turn this over to Troy Billiu, our Administrator for Safety, Security, and Compliance.
Thank you, Ms. Tona, and thank you, Board of Education, for having me here tonight. Tonight, we're going to focus on a few initiatives that we have for the '24-'25 school year that have been underway. The first one is Armored One. This past summer, we had Armored One come to the district and look to put the protective film on all front entrances to all buildings in district-wide. We're in Phase One of this. The design is to slow down or stop attackers from attempting to get into the building, and what that does is it allows time for law enforcement to get to the situation and apprehend the person. So I'm just going to take a quick moment to show a quick video on it that kind of illustrates what we've done. Sure. The link is available on the district website. Yeah, so in essence, what it shows is it shows a gentleman coming up to a doorway, can put two rounds of bullets through the doorway, and then with his fist can punch through the doorway and open up the door. The film that we put on, actually, he throws, he puts a couple rounds of bullets through the window. The bullets do go through the window, but then he takes a hammer, he takes a bat, he starts to crash it, crash it, and actually takes about, you know, a good 15, 20 seconds before he gets through. And it's in that 15 to 20 seconds that police and law enforcement can get to the scene and apprehend the person. And so in Phase One, we've done this with all of our front entrances district-wide. We're looking in Phase Two to do it to the rest of the doors, and then eventually down the road, looking to do it in all first-level windows in all district buildings. So if you get a chance, watch that video online, it's great.
And just to jump in, I think it's more than 15 or 20 seconds that it takes to get through. It was 15, 20 minutes, right? It was, we watched the video, it took an awful long time.
Yeah, it did take some time for him to get through, yes, definitely. The next one is Critical Response Groups, CRG mapping. This is a big initiative that we have for the district, and what we're doing here is we've, we're in works right now of doing the final phase of the walkthrough of the mapping project for all of our buildings. And what we did was, in working with CRG, this is a great video, it's not going to show here, but what it does, it's taking technologies that the Navy SEALs and Armed Forces used in Afghanistan, and also when they captured Bin Laden, and applying it here in school districts. And so what we have is, we have a building-level map that will serve as a plan that all first responders will come to our building, they'll have the same maps to use, and they'll also have the same language to use as they navigate our buildings to find where the perpetrator is. We're in the final phases of the map piece, and on November 14th, I've actually brought together members of the community from the Sheriff's Department, Caramel PD, both fire chiefs within Mahepac, Putnam 911 Center, and the Emergency Bureau Center, along with Superintendent Tona, our Director of Technology, Ben August, and myself, and we're going to talk and learn the common language and how to navigate these maps so that whenever there's an incident moving forward, everyone's on the same page with the language that we use and how to navigate our buildings. So it's a really great piece. If you get a chance, watch that short video online as well. One of the other big things that we've worked on is... One of the other big things that we've worked on is continuing our efforts in threat assessments. And I have, I have Dr. Zides here and also Crystal Holton to talk a little bit about that.
Hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to come in and talk for a few minutes about this really important work that we've been engaging in at the district for a number of years now. We're going to take it back just a little bit because we're just not sure where people are in their knowledge of sort of these things that we're going to be talking about tonight. So CSTAG is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guideline. And this was originally known as the Virginia Student Threat Assessment Guideline. This is a model for, that we use to address threats that are made in our community as a school. The guideline was developed by Dr. Dewey Cornell at the University of Virginia in 2001. And it has been the most highly examined and field-tested threat assessment model created. There were several that were created. Some of them were really developed from the military, sort of like the mapping systems that we use. And Dewey's model has come, come to become the standard because it goes further than the day of the threat. It really speaks to how the community can support that individual moving forward and put in supports to help, for a better outcome, not just on the day of the threat, but long-term for the individual and the community. So.
So Dr. Dewey Cornell, it really is about, the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guideline is a guideline that we follow within the district. So each district, as you know, there's a district building safety team within that. Each individual school has an emergency response team, a crisis response team, and a threat assessment triage team. So we're giving you this information so that you know that we, this is the language that we're using. And so we shorten it and we say CSTAG. The purpose of Dr. Dewey Cornell is that the assessment is done in a fair and equitable and unbiased way, understanding that children and development are really important, right? So it's not to label anyone, it's not to target anyone, it's not to say that students are particularly aggressive or threatening all the time, it's to look at many pieces of their social development and determine what does this particular student need and how do we intervene? It's actually a prevention process that's really important.
We also do have some videos here as well. They are actually snippets of videos from Dr. Dewey himself. So please, if you can, anything that's underlined in our slide page is more information for you to consider. Why threat assessment, why that process exists and why it's necessary in a school is one of the videos. We also just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on where we're at. So this is something that is supported by Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES. All of our training is done through Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES. And one of the advantages of using a model like the one in the CSTAG model is to have a standardized assessment process across school districts and within the school district. So Mayapac schools have been working with Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES to develop and refine our threat assessment teams and processes for several years now. We piloted various programs a number of years ago. And we're at the stage right now where we've developed our teams, we've adapted this model. And the very exciting part that we're here to start talking about today is the use of our software program, which is the Navigate 360. And that is simply the way that we are able to streamline and digitize our CSTAG practices. So instead of paper and pen and individual meetings, we're able to coordinate our teams in real time. And it helps move the process along more quickly and it helps us collaborate within everything that goes on in a school day. And so we're really able to coordinate with our administration, our clinicians, and our law enforcement. Those are the three components to the CSTAG team. And by using the software system, we're really able to coordinate our efforts and streamline what we're doing. So right now, we have engaged, you know, the program was endorsed by BOCES and we're one of the first districts to take it on. And we are currently in the, no, the growing pains phase of things. So we're practicing, we're getting, we're getting our feet wet, we're working with it. But it's really proven to be a system that has a big reach for us. So I'm just going to, there's another video there as well, which is underlined, and that's the use of the Navigate 360 for CSTAG. I don't know if anybody has any questions. We're here, we have lots of experience with all this, so we're able to answer anything that you might have.
No question for me, but I do appreciate the presentation as well as the information in regards to the proactive approach that we're taking to ensure our, our family that's faculty and our student body are as protected as we can make them. And thank you for your efforts and for doing the best that we can to keep everyone here safe.
I have a question. So if the community does have a question, what's the best way to reach? Would be through Troy or through superintendent, what would be the best way to channel the questions from the community?
Either way, if anyone in the community wants to send me the email, I'll forward it to Troy or we'll answer it together. Or they can reach out to Troy directly, B I L Y E U T at mayapac.org.
Thank you again.
John, could I ask a question?
Yeah, please, please.
I just had a quick question for Troy, if I could. I was just seeing in regards to the lockdown on October 2nd, if the safety committee had a chance to meet yet to discuss any best practices or anything learned?
Yeah, we, we actually debriefed not only as a school district, but with local law enforcement as well. And we kind of went through some of the pieces that took place. We got communication out on what actually happened. And I think we were able to clarify the situation. And in all situations like this, you know, even when we do drills throughout the school year, there are takeaways that we learn that we improve upon moving forward. And so we noted that in this situation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you again. And I think it's important to note, after I believe every incident, there is an after-action report, a debriefing, kind of figure out what went right, what could be improved upon, and just treat it as a organic matter where things continue to develop. So thank you for staying on top of everything that you can and doing the best jobs that you can. Any other questions? All right, here are none. What we'll do is move on to the next item on our agenda that is going to be comments on agenda items. These are comments on agenda items only. Melody, do we have anyone that's signed up?
We have the resident comment.
Okay. I will, I'll just kind of read. This will be for not only agenda items, but also for resident comment at the end of the meeting, where you'll be able to make comments on anything outside the agenda. But if you do get up to speak, we ask all speakers to adhere to Policy 1512 in the following fashion: to maintain public decorum that is appropriate for a school, to address the board, to refrain from obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating any type of prejudice will not be tolerated. Comments and questions should be made in a respectful manner and personal attacks or criticisms of any, any person connected with the district will not be permitted. So going over that, does any member of the public have any comment that they'd like to come and make specific in regards to agenda items only right now? Again, you'll have an opportunity after we're done with the voting meeting, then you'll be able to make comments on anything outside the agenda. Anyone? All right, so hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. This is going to be item four, which is going to be reports. And Superintendent Tona, if you'd like to take it away?
Sure, thank you, President Schneider. Our first report is from our Mahopac High School student, Most Representative, Isabella Sopo.
Thank you for having me. I am the senior class president and I'm just going to be giving an update about everything that's going on in the high school right now. Starting first, I will be talking about the, the production, our drama student, our drama company just put on, The Murder Was Staged, as we saw a little preview it earlier tonight. They had over 70 students performing in this crew and performing on stage and over 400 people showed up. They had three shows, it was very successful, very nice. So I thought I'd mention that. And then with our music company, we had, well, tomorrow, we're going to have a fall music concert and it's going to be right here in the auditorium at 7 o'clock. So it would be nice to show some support. And then speaking of the drama, I mean, the music department, this past weekend, we had our band go to UMass and perform at the halftime show. And along with them, we had our German exchange students. And our German exchange students, they came about two weeks ago, it was about 20 of them, and then two exchange teachers as well. And our German students hosted, there's, their German students that take German here in Mayapac hosted them. And they followed around with their schedules and they really got to learn what life was like in America. And also, they traveled to the middle school and they presented how, how their life was like in Germany and they compared American culture to German culture. And then also, our Science National Honor Society hosted a meeting in which they showed the difference between how sciences were. So like, for example, in Germany, they do biology, physics, chemistry, earth science, all in one year. And then each year, it gets progressively harder. So by the time they graduate, they already finished the course like how we do, but we obviously do it, one year you do each one. Along with that, we had our student Most, we generously donated t-shirts for them from Mayapac High School. And unfortunately, this past Sunday, they did go back to Germany. However, our students here and the students in May, in Germany, they've been communicating and they definitely want to meet up in the future, whether it be in Germany or in the US. And in 2026, we're going to have more exchange students come and live in America for about two weeks. Also, I'd like to mention that our computer club is going to be starting to fix Chromebooks and really learn, because we do have some issues with Chromebooks. So it'd be nice for our students in the computer club to contribute to that and help fix any Chromebooks I need fixing. And also, we have our esports program. So Ms. Berkowitz, she will be starting, sorry, hold on. Yeah, she'll be starting esports team. It's for students that don't really find themselves in regular active sports and they want to do something that's online. So we're introducing that for students that feel like they fit. And then finally, we have a guest speakers, we had guest speakers from the Putnam National Alliance on Mental Endless presented to the MHS health classes. They're ending the silence program and the feedback from the students was fantastic and they recommended them coming back to the future, coming back to future classes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. We appreciate having the representatives from the high school. Thank you, Principal Keavens, for helping to facilitate this each month. Each month, I believe, we're going to have a different representative selected by Principal Keavens that will be giving a presentation to keep the board informed of everything that's going on inside the high school, as well as let the community know, more importantly. Additionally, on that, starting next year, New York State law is going to make it where a student member will be considered an ex officio member of the board. We'll have more information on that to come as the state continues to give guidelines. Moving on, we'll go on to our next item, Reports 4B for our Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Tona?
Thank you, President Schneider. Good evening again. So I'd first like to extend my deep condolences to the families and friends affected by today's tragic incident in Somers. It is incredibly upsetting to hear the news of a violent incident, especially when children are involved in a nearby community. As Superintendent, my first priority is the safety of the students and staff. I am grateful for the positive relationship that exists between our school district and the Town of Carmel Police Department and Putnam County Sheriff's Office. Both entities communicate with us and provide support to us so that collectively, we can keep the Mahopac community safe. This morning at 8:07 a.m., we were notified by Town of Carmel PD that a homicide occurred in Somers last night and law enforcement was searching for the suspect in Putnam Valley. We were told that there was no direct involvement to Mayapac or Carmel at that time. And if that were to change or any information that might impact the school district arose, we would be notified. At 8:18 a.m., we learned that some of our neighboring school districts in Westchester were following lockout protocols out of an abundance of caution. At that time, we decided to do the same. We began communicating with our principals and determined that the entire district would follow lockout protocols after arrival was complete at our last schools, especially since Austin Road was closest in proximity to the police activity. We began drafting the communication and sent it out as soon as possible. Since this lockout was put in place out of an abundance of caution and knowing that the threat was not in our proximity, with guidance from an official knowledgeable with the investigation, we decided to maintain our transportation for high school students to go to BOCES for career and technical education classes and allow scheduled field trips to take place since those were not in the proximity of the investigation. After the lockout was lifted, we did debrief and we reviewed our procedures to improve for future incidents. We will include definitions for future events. For example, in today's incident, we followed lockout procedures. A lockout is used to secure our schools during an incident that poses a potential threat that is outside of the school. A lockout allows us to maintain safe operations inside the schools. All outdoor activities such as physical education classes and recess would be held indoors during a lockout. We will send text messages in the future along with email messages. And our district Facebook posts are designed, previously, to keep comments hidden. Facebook's design shows the number of comments received, we can't remove that. We are reviewing why some of the comments that were able to be seen until we hid them to be consistent. Facebook should not be a mechanism to communicate with the district. If questions or concerns arise, please contact the staff member closest to the situation, such as your child's teacher, assistant principal, principal, or me. And thank you again to Mr. Bilyeut, Dr. Zides, and Mrs. Holton for being here with us tonight as scheduled, for providing an overview of some of our safety and security procedures and initiatives. We've done an awful lot of work in that area and we will continue to do so. In really a short amount of time, we've, we meet constantly. Many changes have taken place to protocols and procedures to make our district as safe as possible. I think Dr. Zides mentioned it when she presented, we have been told that we are on the cutting edge of safety and security in the region. We are a district that other districts look to for advice, guidance, and to replicate our practices. So we will continue to review everything that we do, there's always room for improvement. Changing gears, I recently shared with the community that an overpayment was discovered by our business department over the summer that resulted in nine employees receiving an overpayment between $250 and $3,000 during the 2324 school year. The total overpayment of those nine individuals in total, $18,250. This occurred due to human error when inputting the salaries for a particular bargaining unit for one step in their salary schedule. This particular step was only first implemented in 2324 school year. Therefore, this was not an issue prior to 2023, 2024 school year. It has been corrected for this year, 2425. This issue has been discussed with the Board of Education with our attorney present. An additional discussion will be had in the near future as we work to rectify the situation. And as you saw this evening, kudos to our high school drama club on their performance of the comedy titled, This Murder Was Staged. I am so proud of all of our performers, the stage crew, and our directors for their work on this enjoyable performance. Thank you to those who performed for us tonight. We have amazing talent here in Mahopac. Best of luck to our varsity volleyball and football teams as they head into the playoffs on Friday. Volleyball will be home versus Clarkstown South at 4:30 p.m. and football will be away versus Harrison at 7 p.m. Congratulations to our boys and girls varsity soccer teams and our girls' field hockey team for making it to the first round of the playoffs. While they are not advancing, we are all proud of all of you for having a great season. I would like to mention, again, I mentioned it in the presentation, on tonight's agenda, the board will considering, consider awarding our architect Tetra Tech for work related to a fourth phase of our capital project. Tonight, we are also celebrating our Board of Education trustees during annual Board Recognition Month. I thank each of them for their tireless commitment to our students and community. The leadership and vision of these nine volunteers play a crucial, crucial role in shaping educational policies and ensuring that every student has the opportunity to succeed. Tonight is an example of the successes and challenges that are part of running a school district. As Superintendent, I take my responsibilities very seriously. Not everything runs smoothly all of the time. Not everything runs smoothly all of the time. The unexpected does occur. As you've heard, we review incidents and procedures constantly and make improvements as needed. I appreciate the members of the community who reach out with compliments as well as suggestions. This is a community. A community is defined by its members. Just as we expect our students to show respect, kindness, and thoughtfulness, as adults, it is crucial that we demonstrate these same qualities to each other so that Mahopac can continue to be a successful community. Our schools are the hub of this community and I will continue to strive to provide new opportunities for our students through communication and collaboration with families, students, and staff. Again, I appreciate the support that our Board of Education provides to me as we work together to provide our students with a well-rounded education and prepare them for life beyond their school years. I thank our board members for their hard work, advocacy, and unwavering support for quality education in the Mahopac Central School District. Please enjoy the sweatshirts that are in front of you.
All right. Thank you so much for all of the information that you provided. Um, I know that that answers a lot of, uh, questions and concerns that have been around. Um, so I believe the amount of information was very thorough. It's, uh, very much appreciated and especially appreciate hearing in regards to the review of the tragedy of today, um, how we're gonna work going forward to improve what we do and deliver the service. So thank you again for everything that you do, for everything that the assistant superintendents do, and everything that our directors do as well. Um, everybody here who works here. So thank you guys so much for, uh, making our school the environment that it is and being such a valuable resource for our community. Uh, on that note, we will talk about our, um, facilities. Our facilities committee had met on October 8th and, uh, Committee Chair, Trustee Mongen, if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Our facilities committee met on October 8th at 6:00 p.m. Uh, like to thank, uh, thank you very much. Mr. VP's got my back. Um, like to thank, uh, like to thank the team, Superintendent Tona, Alyssa Murray, uh, our president, Jonathan Schneider, our director of facilities, Tim Walsh, Chris Harrigan, and, uh, and Adam Savino, uh, past president Adam Savino, and myself. Um, very, uh, very good conversation. Really enjoy these facility meetings. I know, uh, Superintendent Tona reported on the, uh, on the Lakeview roof. Uh, it looks like the old, uh, the old, um, slate roof is going to be replaced with something that is, uh, very much like Slate. Um, so, uh, to keep the, um, to keep the architectural component, uh, which makes that, which really makes that building, uh, you know, very special. So that was really important. Um, the high school parapet wall with the blue, uh, the, um, blue fence outside the boys locker room for the last three years, we're closing in on, um, on finalizing, uh, the replacement for the parapet wall, uh, and, and that, uh, on that side of the building over there. It looks like we'll be doing that in the spring. Um, what we did was, we thought this would be interesting. You know, when we went for the $54 million bond, uh, when I was, um, when we first got involved with the, um, facilities updates and facilities review, when I got on the school board, there were a lot of things that we couldn't get on the, uh, on the, on the list for the $54 million. So I thought it was important to go back and see what we didn't get on the list. And, uh, and, and I thought that was really important to go back and, and take a look at, um, and take a look at what we had to leave off. So we're gonna be revisiting all those things. Um, obviously, uh, Superintendent Tona touched on bathrooms renovations. Um, um, you know, that's always an ongoing, uh, an ongoing issue. Um, so we're working on those district-wide. Um, we also have, uh, we have just an update. We have the walk-in refrigerators that are going in at the middle school, Foma Road School in Lakeview. Um, want to thank MSA for their, um, uh, we're trying to organize some parking around here, especially on the, uh, on the, on the big days where we have, uh, you know, we have so many teams. We have 44 teams here at the high school. So, uh, so there are a lot of times when we've got multiple things going on in all the facilities, um, along with our recreation, uh, uh, component, using the field. So I want to thank MSA, uh, for getting the, um, uh, getting their membership to kind of take advantage of the parking area in the back instead of trying to cram everything up in the front over here. There's usually a boatload of parking down in the back over there. And I know that that became, uh, you know, traffic was, uh, was an issue early on, but it looks like that that's really, uh, we really made some strides over there. Um, again, on this agenda tonight, you'll see that there are, uh, that there are meetings that are planned, uh, two meetings a year with MSA, um, uh, just to be on the same page, uh, with regards to the use of the facilities and what our expectations are, uh, from, uh, the way that the facilities are being used and cared for. Um, we're, um, we're in the midst of collecting data for bleachers, for the, uh, for the practice field, for the new field over there. So we'd like to get some bleachers over, over there. So, uh, Tim Walsh and his team are working on, on, uh, on getting, uh, on getting pricing for the bleachers. Uh, we've also, uh, contacted Musco Lighting. Musco's given us a, um, a kind of a, um, a, a contract or not a contract, but a, um, a projected, uh, projected, uh, number for what, uh, what it's gonna cost to replace the lighting that we have there and get lighting that can actually support high school athletics. If anybody's been out on the field in the evening time, uh, even with the lights that are out there, it's still very, very dark and, and, and not, not really what we're looking for with regards to the, uh, to the amount of light that's needed to really, you know, to be safe and, and be out there to, uh, participate in sports. Uh, the lighting that we'll put in will also support high school athletics. Um, and then the other thing we have is, uh, we just, we've, we've jumped in some wish list items. In your last month, I talked about, uh, getting some turf, uh, for our elementary schools, seeing the success that, uh, that Tom Cazacria is enjoying with the turf field over at the, uh, middle school, right? Tom's pretty special over there, right? Um, so we'd like that, like to see that, uh, be a little bit more infectious to the elementary schools, uh, by getting some turf fields over for theirs, for their usage for, um, uh, for, um, for recess and for, uh, and for, um, and for the PE classes. I think it's important that we just, that we just don't stay inside, you know, whenever there's opportunities, especially with the weather. Gosh, I don't know. You know, it used to snow like heck, uh, when I, growing up here. It doesn't seem like it's snowing that much anymore, but there's always opportunities. And I know that, uh, the middle school is really reaping the benefits, uh, of the, uh, of the field over at the middle school. And we just thought that that would be a nice opportunity to have that over at the elementary schools. Um, we're also talking, uh, about just, you know, conceptually about the possibility of doming the, um, tennis courts in the, in the wintertime. This would support physical education here at Mahopac High School and the middle school. It would also help support some clubs, um, our, uh, our teams that require a lot more. We just don't have enough room for, you know, we have 44 teams and everybody vying for, you know, to get a big start in the spring. Uh, the, um, with our winter, uh, usage, it's just very, it's, it's very difficult to balance everything and get everything that we want. Um, and we also thought that that would be a nice thing to be able to offer, uh, even in recreation standpoint, uh, the opportunity. I know these pickleball people are crazy. I don't know if anybody's out there that plays pickleball, but, uh, I know these people are always, they're always looking for, uh, they're always looking for, um, uh, pickleball and they're always looking for, 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 I'm sorry. That's, that's what it is. The people are nuts. So, uh, but in any case, it's, uh, it's one of, uh, it's one of America's, it's one of America's fastest growing, growing sports. And what we need to do is we need to be able to find more opportunities throughout the, throughout the town Miorda to be able to accommodate them. So, uh, so, you know, hence the dome. I know it is. That being said, that was, uh, it was a heck of a meeting. It concluded at seven o'clock, so we packed quite a bit in. And that is my report for this evening. Turn it back to you.
Greatly appreciated. Uh, yeah, I also appreciate the effort you put in that night. You were pretty sick that night, but you, uh, you made it through the whole meeting. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that.
Uh, right after that meeting, we had our finance meeting, um, that was chaired by, uh, Committee Chair, Trustee Delulo, who's not present tonight. So Trustee Travis was present, if you would be so kind, as to, uh, provide the public with the minutes for the finance committee.
Absolutely. Yep. So the meeting occurred on October 8th and it was in the Fall School Professional Development Room and it began at 7:15. Um, the attendees that were present was Committee Finance Committee Chairman, uh, Trustee Ben Delulo. And then we also had our Board President, Trustee Schneider, and myself was present and Chris, our Superintendent Christine Tona and our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Alyssa Murray. Uh, Trustee Mongen unfortunately was very ill that night, so he left after facilities. He was not present for the finance, um, meeting. So, uh, we started with first an overview of our external audit. So Assistant Superintendent of Business Alyssa Murray reviewed the draft, um, for the Mahopac Central School District Financial Statement Audit and the management letter from O'Connor Davies, which was presented, um, last week on Thursday at our Board of Ed work session. So that was on October 24th. Um, Partner Jeffrey Shaver had given that presentation and kind of went through the process of what that audit looks like. Next, we discussed district reserves. Um, so Assistant Superintendent Murray reviewed the 23-24 fund balances and the reserves reference guide that was requested at a previous finance meeting, um, back on September 10th. And she, we got a lot of great resources from her and we're gonna be posting those on the district website under the finance link. Next, we went through the financial reports for August. Um, so Assistant Superintendent Murray reviewed the monthly financial reports one by one and different members of the committee asked specific questions regarding warrants and budget transfers. Next was internal audit planning, um, 24-25. So we were discussing the timing of the internal audit. Um, so O'Connor Davies had conducted our external audit and next up will be our internal audit. So we were talking about what that timing will look like for us. Next was the RFP for Financial Advisory Services Award. Um, so Alyssa Murray reviewed the request for proposal for the districts, um, different financial advisory services. And lastly, we discussed foundation aid formula. So this is something that is gonna be, um, changing for us and we need to know kind of what we're gonna be advocating for, what's important to our district. Um, so since we have to have a review of the foundation aid formula and have that report due by December 1st, in order to maximize our financial aid, uh, we've asked Assistant Superintendent Murray to provide us with some specific parts of the formula that would be important for our district. Um, she then provided us, um, with the ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials, recommendations on areas that we should really advocate for. Um, so our committee will review those and submit our recommendation to the advocacy committee for their consideration. So the meeting ended at 8:22.
Thank you so much for that report. Um, next will be our policy committee report and, uh, Committee Chair, Trustee McCracken, if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So the School Board Policy Committee met on October 17th. We opened the meeting at six o'clock. Present was myself, trustees Lisa Carway and Jennifer Travis, our superintendent, Christine Tona, Assistant Superintendent Matt Lawrence, District Clerk Melody LaRaca, as well as our Director of Technology, Ben August, and our attorney, Dan Pedagro. So, and also, I should mention, our Board President John Schneider attended as well. So we had a couple of items on the agenda. The first one was a discussion about cell phone usage policy in our schools. So this is a, right now, an early conversation. There's no proposal under the committee, no proposal before the board. Uh, it was a review of our cer- our, right now, our present day procedures for use in the schools. And we want to go, and this is the committee's intention to go at this in, in the right way, to involve the community, involve stakeholders. First, what is the policy? What is the procedure? We got some information on what is currently happening in our schools. Uh, the committee wanted to find out exactly what it, what is the damage? What does it look like right now in terms of how much are cell phones impacting the learning process for students in the classrooms during lectures? So the first, uh, action that we initiated was we were gonna, we wanted to do a survey with teachers. What are they seeing on the ground level? How much are students being distracted by the phones during the class session, which is currently, they're not supposed to be out during classroom time. Following that, we also, this is not, that's going out first. The next survey would be out to parents. What do parents think? I've heard from many residents and parents that find it important to be able to communicate to their kid during the school day. I've also spoken to a lot of parents that are concerned about the general negativity that, uh, cell phones and the content is doing to, to young kids' minds. So there's a balance here. Something that I think our policy committee should do and we should pursue, and I believe the members were in support of it, is start holding town halls, especially on committees that are in high interest of the community, have a hearing, hear what people want to say, and have multiple proposals. We can't insulate ourselves from what the community wants. We want to lay out specific, here's option A, B, C, or what to do about this. And that way, people can formulate opinions and give it to us. So we can govern with stakeholders, not just come down with an iron fist. It's obvious that the state has certain proposals to just mandate this on all school districts, ban phones out of the schools. This is our way of saying, we want local control, but let's actually exercise it. So that's the policy committee's intention. And that was a lot of the discussions. We talked to Ben August about certain technology to, I believe it's called geo-fencing. I might have the, the terminology incorrect, but it is cert- it's, it's a technology that would go around and network to prevent certain apps from being opened. Right now, this is early technology and it really is not practical for our schools, but it was an important conversation to hear about what are some of the options. We want to write the policy in a way that can last a long time and something that we feel is the right balance for learning and safety in our schools. After that, there was a conversation about artificial intelligence in education and whether we can write a policy that would help against, you know, proper use, proper teaching. This is a very, very robust conversation. And I'll get to this when we talk about another policy when it comes to recording committee meetings. But this one, if we had a policy to record committee meetings, this was a discussion that I really would have hoped had been recorded. It was a very, um, important conversation from our superintendent, the board members, and Ben August about really what is AI, which people can give you a lot of other answers, and what does it look like in our schools? Because it's, we're, we're past the point of, is it here? It's here. It was, used to be, oh, it's coming. It is here. So what AI tools are acceptable? What are not? How can you, how can you police it? How can you encourage it in correct ways? Because AI is being used all across the professional world. So the policy committee is going to take another review at that and possibly have a proposal for what we would govern. It, it might be under policy. It also might be under, um, the student handbook or procedures for the school district. But basically what it would be is, it could bring it to the board of, what is the proper use of AI tools in education? After that, we talked about a policy about district neutrality on non-school district issues. This is on the agenda tonight for the school board. It passed the committee 3-0. Basically what it says is, on issues that are not pertaining to the school district, then the school district can remain neutral, meaning not make a statement on the issue. Um, it's, it's a neutrality statement. It, it's, it's on issues that are unrelated to the school district. I asked several questions on the committee to our attorney about exactly what this would prevent us from doing. I wanted to make sure that if there was a global issue, a world issue, that impacted our schools in a way that encouraged bullying for a certain group, if there is a, um, a safety concern, would that prevent the school district from making a statement? It wouldn't. So it alleviated my concerns. That's why I voted yes. And the other two trustee, voting trustees on the committee voted yes as well. That is on the agenda for tonight. The next one was the policy to have committee meetings recorded and published with the minutes. This is something I've personally pushed for for a long time. I'll talk more about my opinion when I vote for it, but for the facts, it's on the committee tonight under two proposals, the ad hoc committee policy and the subcommittee policy. It just has one line in there that says, in all committee meetings, if it is public content, it shall be recorded and distributed to the people. This has been something that has not been recorded. All the work that gets done, it, it's told here in these reports, uh, that can be, be very lengthy, and you guys are here, which I appreciate, but this is for the working moms and dads that don't have the time to always be at the meeting at the specific time and location. They can go back, see how their tax dollars are being spent, see what curriculum is being crafted for their kids, and see what policies is, is governing the school district. I think this is unleashing transparency and it's a good thing for the school district. That has to pass, by the way, two board sessions. So that passed 3-0 in the committee. It has to pass tonight and then in November, it will be voted on again and then it will become policy. And this was something that I think I should touch on just as policy chairman. It didn't go through the committee, but it was discussed by the board during the work session. On the committee agenda tonight, you'll also see policy 1230, which is public comment at board meetings. There is a line in there that prevented public participation at both work sessions and committee meetings. There's a proposal on the agenda tonight to remove that restriction. So it gets removed and if that passes tonight and in November, public participation will be allowed at committee, excuse me, work sessions and committee meetings if the chair of the meeting allows for it. We ended the night with a discussion of apparent appeal for a private school student to participate in district activities, and that was a briefing in to participate in district activities, and that was a briefing in executive session. The meeting ended at eight o'clock. It was a two-hour meeting, and I think that was evident from how long this report was. But it was an important meeting, and I'll end with this. To all the board members and to any people in the community, as chair, I've made it clear that I want everyone to have equal agenda-setting power. So if somebody has an idea for a policy, bring it to me. It will go right on the agenda as long as it's in their purview. I don't care what my opinion is. It's something that will be discussed by the committee. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Trustee McCracken. It was a very thorough meeting, a lot of great modifications to existing policies, and a lot of great discussion. I look forward to seeing what the committee will continue to do throughout the year. On that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is going to be item five, a donation. And Vice President Martinez, if you could read 5A for USB microphone and case donation, please.
Sure. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Mahopek Central School District accepts a donation from Heather McGardle, high school science teacher, consisting of one blue snowball ice USB microphone with pop filter and case valuing $50 to be used in the Mahopek High School Music Department.
Thank you for that motion being offered. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Mangan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. Next item will be our consent agenda, and if I can get a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Subpo.
Motion by Vice President Martinez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Mangan. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I apologize. Before I take the vote, is there any discussion? All right.
Yeah, I just want to, just thank the board, because I've, I just want to say, I've proposed recording committee meetings and having them public for years, and there was not board support. This is a board that is, I believe, going to be unanimous in this initiative, and I just want to thank every trustee for their vote, because this is an incredibly important initiative for unleashing transparency, and it was actually harder than you would believe, and I'm just very proud of what the board is doing tonight.
Thank you, and I second that statement. So on that comment, we have a first, we have a second. I'll just ask all in favor again.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Passes unanimously. On that, we will move to our final agenda item, which is going to be resident comment. Again, resident comment. We ask that you adhere to policy 1512. We already went through it. We're all adults here. Please act like it. Has anyone signed up for a resident comment?
Yes, I got, um, I received a call.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to come up, and first, I want to say congratulations to everybody on the consent agenda, especially Hans, Sal, and Richie Peeler, who I work very closely with, and I am extremely, extremely excited about their appointment. I'm so excited for them. Actually, the reason that I stood up here was I wanted to thank our transportation department. In athletics, everything is changing incredibly. By the second, you blink your eye and it's a change, and our transportation department has been so accommodating and so wonderful, and I just wanted to publicly thank them, because they just are rock stars. So that's all. I just wanted to bring that. I wanted to say it publicly, because they deserve the recognition. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Melanie, anyone else?
Yes, Amy Saka. Justin Saka.
Hi, Kate Bellantoni. This past May, each school district in the 17th Congressional District were invited to participate in the Congressional Art Challenge, a program officially sanctioned by the U.S. Congress. This platform allowed students to submit their artwork for evaluation by Congress members, with selected pieces displayed in one of DC's prestigious buildings. From what I have been told, the district notified some art teachers of the contest, but regrettably, it would not send it out to the community due to its political nature. So, it was quite a surprise when my children's weekly elementary school notice came out with Senator Harkum's face planted on it for a Thanksgiving showcase. Myself, along with other community members, called the school right away, and I am very grateful for their understanding and quick actions to remove it within minutes as more was being discussed. Ms. Tona, I then spoke with you, and you claim that it has been done in the past since he is a sitting politician. I don't personally recall that, but maybe he's only advertised this during election years. Regardless, my question is, why is an art contest too political in nature for a community announcement, but a Harkum Thanksgiving contest is not? You also mentioned that the announcement did not come from your office. This is a contentious election year. Surely, guidance from the top down should have been made going into these sensitive months. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Nobody else signed up at this time? All right. Anyone sitting here have any questions, comments, concerns while we have our resident comment portion? All right. Hearing, nothing. Does anyone on the board have anything for the betterment and for the good of the district that they'd like to make a statement on, or anything? Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Oop, closer. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. This is Board Recognition Month, so I just want to take a moment to thank you as the public for being here and attending the meetings, which we appreciate and we like to see more of. Participation is key in the development of our goals and our district. It is an honor to sit here at the table amongst nine hard-working volunteer board members and discuss matters of the district, as we do countless days of every month, countless hours spent doing it. Superintendent Tona gives timely updates on critical situations after consulting sometimes with the board or board leadership. It gives a lot of information. What troubles me sometimes is, as a board member sitting here, and I'm speaking personally, the criticism and the negativity that's received around some of the items is very disappointing. I like to consider myself a fair and rational person, and a way to resolve conflict is not through accusations and yelling and screaming. It's through conversations. So please, if you have concerns, please convey them, but I would ask to do it in a respectful fashion. We all work very hard at doing the work for the district, and I can assure you that does not one person sitting here that does not take the safety of our students, their futures, their education, and everything else as a top priority for everyone in this district, including our employees. So please, I ask, as a parent in the district, as a school board member, as an individual, that we take the time and work together through these issues, no matter what they are, because together is how we solve the problems, not divided as one body together. Thank you.
All right. That was well said. Thank you for the comments. Any other members of the board?
A member, I think a member of the public wants to make a public comment. I'm willing to motion back to the agenda item if we have to.
Okay. Yeah. No, I don't think we're going to need to motion back to it. That's okay. If you'd like to come up. Yeah, if you could just come up so that the home audience is able to hear your comments as well. Thank you so much.
Just to respond to what you said, we appreciate everything that you do, communication everything with the parents, but today, a lot of people felt that the communication just wasn't met. I think this morning, I found out about this situation probably at like 6:30 in the morning. Didn't really know exactly what was going on, but there was a lot of information from Putnam Valley parents telling like Mahopek parents, and something to, once I learned that this had happened behind like Bobo's Cafe, which is Somers, but it's like you could throw a rock and like Mahopek's right there, and there are schools back there and all this stuff. I know that the, um, the person was like pinged or whatever, so they didn't think that they were like a threat to us, but I don't think that the victims thought they were a threat either. And I just think that I called the school around 8:44 to let them know, and they said they found out two minutes ago about this situation, because I said, maybe you should consider not letting the kids go out for recess. I don't know what's true. I don't know what's going on. There was a bunch of parents, you know, texting, messaging. There's things on Facebook. There's things coming out now in the news, all these things, and I just think that it really wasn't communicated well, and it sent a lot of parents into like a frenzy and a worry, and that's where a lot of like this information comes out, and why some people go to the internet sometimes, and they're just looking for answers. So, I know she said what she would do better next time is maybe just help with like definitions and stuff like that, but like, I don't expect to get something in like a split second to know, but I just think that they could have let us know before the kids, there were kids getting on the bus that lived by like Austin Road, high schoolers. My son goes to school, he has to be there at 8:15. Like, I just don't think the way that it happened was okay in the way that it was sent out, the communication. And sorry, it feels really weird talking on this microphone.
No, it's, it's okay, but if you could stay up just for one second. Only, we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much for the feedback, but if you could just state your name just for the record.
Oh, Jaclyn Lugo.
Okay. Thank you so much. We do appreciate the comments.
I did leave out one part. One part that I did forget, forgot to mention is, there are times during some of these investigations, I'm not speaking specifically of this morning, that there are details that cannot be, that we don't know. It could compromise an investigation. So understandably, there's social media, that everybody's talking about everything, but there are details, we can't just reiterate what's on social media necessarily. But there are definitely times that I've personally witnessed being part of a situation, that details can't be divulged or disseminated until a certain port of investigation is reached. So there's, understandably, everybody wants to know, which is, you know, get it. No, I'm not speaking about this morning specifically, because that's still fresh, and, no, I get it, but in general, so yeah.
Just do me a favor. No, no back and forth conversations here. You're good? All right. So yes, definitely, in any situation where you have a unexpected tragedy occur, there's always going to be more information that's desired, and I do appreciate the feedback that's come from the community. I appreciate the review that's been done through the institution. I appreciate the modifications that'll be made going forward to improve communication. I think it was discussed that the decision was made, we'll be implementing text messages as well going forward. So I think we're treating this as, unfortunately, it's a tragedy in our community, but it is an opportunity for us to reevaluate how we, how we react in situations that are extremely unexpected, and things that we have not addressed before, and hopefully never have to address again. But yeah, I don't believe at any point there's an intentional lack of information that goes out. I think it's a matter of us working hard to give timely information that's appropriate to inform parents so that they can be able to make decisions for their, their children, for their families. But yes, an ongoing discussion will continue, and I do appreciate everything that the superintendent does, Mr. Bill you as well, as our Director of Safety and Security, and I appreciate everything that our parents in our community do as well, especially providing feedback in regards to any concerns or questions that are out there. So thank you all for your participation. Anyone else on the board have any other information for the good of the district? Sure.
So I just want to take the opportunity, I don't know how many of you are familiar, I'm new on the board. I was just elected this past May, and I think the ideas that many of us have before we get on the board, things look one way, and it's obviously different, the amount of hours, the amount of time, the amount of dedication. And I've learned so much from the people that I'm sitting here at this, at this table, and as part of, you know, Board Appreciation Month, I want to give my thanks and my gratitude. I also want to say that it has been really lovely getting to see even more of how the school works. I thought I was involved before. Now I'm involved. And it's something that, if anyone has thoughts of doing this, it is a wonderful opportunity to be really involved in your community. You know, I fully support our superintendent. I think, this is my personal opinion, I'm, you know, I know that we have areas where we can learn and grow, but I also think we do a lot of things really well, and we forget sometimes all those different areas that we do really well. So, you know, for me personally, I'm very grateful to be here, and I'm so glad so many people came out. A lot of our board meetings are not strongly attended, and I'm so glad there's so much community engagement tonight, because this is what we need more of. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other board members? All right. Hearing none. What I'd like to do is thank all of my fellow board members as board appreciation. This job is, I would, I would say it's one of the more thankless jobs that's out there, especially since none of us get paid, none of us get benefits, none of us get tenure, none of us get retirements or pension from this. But we all volunteer our time from our families, from our friends, and your time and your commitment to our institution, and especially to our students, is greatly appreciated. Superintendent Tona as well, and District Clerk Melody LaRaca, greatly appreciate everything that you both provide for us, for our families, for our community, and our children. On that note, can I get a motion to close our meeting? All right. So I have a initial by VP Martinez. It sounded like it was seconded by Trustee McCracken. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. I hope everybody gets home safe and has a great night. Thank you again. Good night.